We're good, okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for August 19th, 2020. Can we start with the roll call, please?
Commissioner Blanco?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Seifert?
Here.
Chair Lopez?
Here.
Some additional information for this Zoom platform meeting. This is a regular Planning Commission public hearing. Comments should have been submitted to the planning staff via email by 3:00 PM this afternoon. If you wish to comment on an agenda item, please use the raise hand icon on the Zoom platform. Once you're recognized, you will be unmuted and allowed to comment on the business at hand in the order received. Maximum comment time is three minutes or as otherwise directed by the chair. If you are calling in and wish to be acknowledged, please raise your hand by dialing star nine and identify yourself when unmuted. For the commissioners, I'd like to ask that you hold on to any questions until the staff presentation is done. So with that, we'll go to the first item of business, which is the approval of Planning Commission minutes of August 5th, 2020. Have the commissioners had a chance to review those? And if so, may we have a motion?
I move the August 5th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting minutes.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hernandez. Do we have a second?
A second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Seifert. May we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Chair Lopez?
Aye.
Next item up is the public comment period. Each member of the audience may address the commission on any subject within the commission's business. Each member of the audience and each subject is limited to a discussion of three minutes or as otherwise directed by the chair. These are for items that are not on the agenda. Do we have anyone wishing to make a public comment? I see a hand up. Commissioner Seifert?
Yes, Chair. I don't see the city attorney online. I was just pointing that out. I don't know if she's at the meeting or not.
Good point, thank you.
Commissioner Seifert, I'm present at City Hall.
There we go. Thank you, Heather.
Okay, we'll go ahead and just a brief description of the order of our meetings. I'll go ahead and introduce the agenda item. I'll turn it over to staff for a presentation. Once staff's presentation is completed, I will open the agenda item to the commissioners to ask any questions of staff. After all questions by the commissioner answered, I will open the agenda item to the applicant who will be on as an attendee. I will then ask if any commissioners have any questions of the applicant. Once the commission has asked questions of the applicant, I will then open the item up to those in favor, against, or neutral toward the agenda item. For the public, those of you that are attending, please wait to raise your hand until after I have called for public comment on the item, and the host will unmute you in the order received. Please remember, if you are dialing in, use the star nine keys to raise your hand. You will have up to three minutes or as otherwise directed by the chair. When public comment is completed, only the applicant will be able to make any rebuttal. After the rebuttal and no further questions from the commission, I will close the public hearing and turn the item back to the commission for any comments, questions, discussion, or motions. With that said, we'll go ahead and move to the first item on the agenda, which is a continued item. It's the Enos Ranch West Shopping Center Plan Development Permit at the northwest corner of Betaravia Road and College Drive. May we please have a staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Carol Zizinhany, and I'll be presenting the staff presentation for the Enos West Project. I'm just sharing my screen now, okay. So again, my name is Carol Zizinhany, and I am presenting the project at the northwest corner of Betaravia Road and College Drive. So for those who are unfamiliar, the project is just to the west of the existing Enos Ranch Commercial Center. It's just east of Petco, south of the Santa Maria Cemetery, and north of the Crossroads Auto Center. The subject site is located in a planned development, general commercial zoning district, and an open space zoning district. To the west are also commercial uses. To the north is a public facility, which is owned by the Cemetery District. To the west is a single-family residential neighborhood, and to the south is more general commercial. So a little bit of background on the previous hearing. At the July 5th hearing, staff presented the project with a recommendation for approval of the project. The commissioners brought up the following comments or concerns. Grade difference in wall height between the shopping center and the residential homes. Additional pedestrian amenities, including plazas, outdoor seating, and open space, was desired by the commission. Construction noise vibrations and hours of noise generating activities were a concern for the commission as well. And another concern was a request to extend the eastbound left turn pocket on Betaravia Road heading towards College Drive. So the commission, after discussion, moved to continue the item to the August 19th hearing, directing staff to work with the applicant to address these concerns. So that brings us to tonight's hearing. Changes per the Planning Commission direction have been reflected in the permit and the plan set. So a condition of approval was added to the permit to limit the construction hours from Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Weekend construction is not permitted with this permit. And however, non-noise generating activities, quieter activities, are not subject to these restrictions. Six new plaza areas were added, and outdoor seating areas were expanded in the existing proposed outdoor seating. The multipurpose trail was relocated to within project boundaries. Larger landscaped area was near Inger Drive. I'll speed this up so I can actually get to the site plan. The grading of the site was lowered by about two feet, and the proposed buildings are now four feet lower than previously approved for the Mercado project on the site. The Westerly property line was modified to include a terrace retaining wall with two-foot wide planter beds for the neighbors. So without further ado, I'll present the proposed new site plan, and I'll go through the changes in more detail. So if everyone can see the screen, okay, that works. So to the north here, an item of revision was included to move the pedestrian and bicycle trail onto the project property. I'll go into further detail about sections and showing exactly how that design works with the rest of the property. Additionally, the buildings one, two, and three were moved south to accommodate that You can't really see it on this slide, but I'll go into more detail about the Westerly boundary walls in another slide. So this is a view of the revised site plan and the previous site plan. So new is on the left, old is on the right. One can see the modified building locations. Building seven over here was reduced by 16,000 square feet, and as such, parking field was reduced from 111 stalls, reduced to 326 stalls, but it still meets parking standards, and the landscape requirements are still met with this project. Also depicted here is new and old site plans, showing to the right, the old, there were approximately two open plaza areas, approximately 800, 900 square feet, and the applicant has revised those open space areas to add about nine times the amount of outdoor seating area and plaza area. So there are nine proposed outdoor seating and plaza areas on this new site plan. Here's a revised grading plan. It should look pretty familiar from the previous presentation, just to show that the escarpment is located here. This is a major geographic element to the existing site, and the sections are going to be forthcoming. So this is a view of the revised sections for the length of the site. This is a north-to-south section, as if you're cutting a slice of cake and you're opening it up to see what's inside. So starting from the south along Betaravia, the grade of the modified project slopes down to below the existing grade on the site currently, and that also drops the buildings down by two feet. This is a view of the revised sections for the bicycle and pedestrian trail. So G is the top section here. It's closer to Inger Drive and Building One. So it starts at grade with Inger Drive, and it slowly comes up in grade and kind of undulates to be at Section D, where it gets to at grade level with the project, and then it will slope down again, down to College Drive. And depicted along here are also shade trees and screen trees to add additional landscaping amenities to the trail. This is a view of the revised sections. One thing I wanted to mention is that, as of this afternoon, there have been some revisions to the sections that were provided by the applicant, so that will be forthcoming in the next slide. I just wanted to make that aware for those who have looked at the packet online. This is a view of the revised sections here. Where this black line is, is looking north at the residences and the existing site and the proposed retaining wall. So the applicant has, in response to commission concerns and neighbor concerns, come back with a modified design to break up the proposed retaining wall and create more of a stepped terrace experience with landscaping that can be planted per the neighboring property owner's liking. So there's planting area. It essentially extends the neighbor's backyard area onto the property, and included in the revised permit is a condition to require an easement for planting and access so the owners can maintain their landscape areas. The care and maintenance of the wall itself is still the responsibility of the property owner for the commercial property. Still present is the proposed landscape area with trees. That has not changed. However, revised plans for showing a screening wall, which also serves to kind of block any sort of noise intrusion, has been included as well. So the trees and the wall are intended to work to block noise intrusion into the residences. Here's a revised section. This is new. It was not in the packet that was provided to the public on the website. So one important item to note is, the building has been revised to show that it is supposed to be 19 feet tall. This is a view looking north again at the second from south, second from Inger Drive. So it's looking at Building One. Again, there's a proposed terrace allen block wall to provide some landscape screening and to soften that hard wall boundary between the commercial and residential. This is a view of one of the neighboring residence backyards and showing the existing condition of the existing masonry wall. So one thing I wanted to mention, in case it wasn't clear, is that the retaining wall or the neighboring existing masonry wall is proposed to either be removed by the applicant if the owner so wishes, or it can stay and won't be affected. It's up to the owner, and the applicant is going to be, as a condition of approval, is required to do neighbor outreach to determine what that specific homeowner desires. And so this is a view of the revised section for Building Four. The only change to note here is that the landscape planner is now flat. It used to be sloped down towards College Drive. So the city has received a comment letter from Mr. Alvarez, who lives on Daniel Drive, and the letter raised some concerns that staff would like to just read into the record here. So there was some concerns about the structural integrity of the retaining walls. Staff would like to defer that to the applicant's engineer, who is on this call or who's attending this meeting. There were some concerns about noise and air pollution enforcement during construction. Staff would like to note that included as a condition of approval, and condition number five is incorporated into the permit to reference, which reference and incorporates mitigation monitoring program as part of the environmental impact report prepared for the Enos Ranch's specific plant area. And that EIR, the Environmental Impact Report, identified noise and air pollution as potential impacts, and the mitigation monitoring program is intended to address those environmental concerns, consequences, and mitigate them to a level of insignificance or less insignificant impact. So this environmental impact report was adopted by the city council and received comments through a public process. And in addition, it is also important to note that for any, prior to any construction, vehicles must meet state emission standards or obtain a permit from the Air Pollution Control District of Santa Barbara County, which is intended to prevent air emissions from diesel-powered construction equipment and other such polluting creators. So number three is delivery truck noise. There are conditions in place. Condition number seven addresses hours of deliveries and limits it to between 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM with only one delivery in the early hours between nighttime hours allowed per week. In addition, there are screening trees intended to create a barrier between the residences and commercial uses. And again, there is also a concrete wall to separate those uses. So another issue that was raised was the visual impact to neighbors, specifically the height of Building One. The project meets city standards in terms of building height and setbacks. For commercial projects adjacent to residential uses, buildings, building heights are to be below 40 feet, and the project meets those requirements. The maximum height, I believe, is about 35 feet. The wall closest, the Westerly wall of Building One, is proposed at 19 feet. And as a condition of approval, the applicant will agree to a condition which would read something to the effect of the western wall of Building One shall not exceed 19 feet tall. Staff would recommend inserting that into condition number 18 as a part of the architectural element condition. And then just along the lines of conditions three and four, the neighbors were concerned about Buildings One and Three being flipped to reduce those truck noises and visual impacts. So with that, that concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available for any comments, and the applicant is also available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Carol. Does the commission have any questions of staff? I do not see any. We'll go ahead and, is the applicant online, Mr. Sanders? Is that the applicant?
Yes, he's online.
Okay. If he'd like to go ahead and give his presentation or field any questions?
Thank you. Can you hear me okay, Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Sanders.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. It's nice to see you all again, even though we can't be in the room. And thank you, Carol, for a very detailed staff report. You took a lot of what I said out of me here, so I'll try to be more brief, and hopefully that helps us all. I thought just before going into the changes that we've made, just to kind of touch on the big picture here. After our Planning Commission hearing on July 15th, there was a lot of work that our team and staff put into trying to meet the concerns of the commission, the Planning Commission, and the residents. And a lot of the changes we made, I hope you're very pleased with, because we really tried to do our best to create a symbiotic shopping center with the community and with the neighbors. And as I mentioned in my letter to you, I believe this really is a great example of where the public review and comment process, combined with the private design process, can work together to create a truly enhanced development. So as a big picture recap and a quick refresh, the picture before you is Enos Ranch Center. We developed this property a couple of years ago and brought Dick's Sporting Goods and Home Goods and others you see before you to the market, and it was really an underserved market for retail. There was a lot of need for retail, and even with the COVID issues that we have today, there's still a strong desire for a new grocer to come to town, for more food to come to town, and retail. I want to go to the next slide, Carol. We wanted to just kind of provide an overview of how this plays together. We currently manage and operate the Enos Ranch Center. We would also manage and operate the Enos Ranch Center West, and truly, this is just a phase two. We're trying to not reinvent the wheel here, but just continue on with another wheel. Next slide, please. Some of the, Carol basically gave you a very detailed report of the changes, so I guess I would just, the things I felt like were most important to point out to you was that the trail, changing the trail to remove it from the Cemetery District's property and put it onto ours was a really great change. Really provides, you know, an interesting trail as opposed to what we had before, which was just kind of coming up along the back of the wall, and we had some nice landscaping there, but by moving it onto our property, it actually created an opportunity to have some undulation and meandering to the trail, which really enhances the experience for the pedestrians and bikers that'll come from the neighborhood over to College Drive. Also, one of the commissioners, and I don't remember who, had mentioned, "What about public art?" in our previous hearing, and it was something I was planning to do, but just hadn't shown it, and so I wanted to make sure that everyone understands that we will be doing that. When we put the art in across the street, one of the visions of the art was that it could be symbiotic with the businesses there, and so it was a babbling brook is what it was called, but it was really just, you know, some nice benches that had some, you know, interesting formations to it, and for people to be able to sit and have ice cream while, you know, somewhere else other than just a chair and tables. And I remember about six months ago out there having ice cream myself and watching a couple kids sitting on top of the formations licking their ice cream cones, just having climbed up there, and it was like, that was exactly what that was about. So we'd be hoping to do something here again that is, you know, kind of a placemaking point for the community and for the shopping center, and something that you see as you drive in off of College Drive. Next slide, please. So just a few points on the major differences. When we did the color site plan, I thought, you know, it really stands out that we just have a lot more trees here. We have a double row of street trees and a lot more interior trees than Enos Mercados had. We've increased the amount of plazas and outdoor seating areas, and I think the changes to the trail helped to come closer to what Mercados was proposing to do. Next slide, please. Some significant changes we've made to the overall site is that we have actually lowered the site by two feet overall, which our civil engineer, Russ Garrison, is on the line and we'll ask him to speak after me so that he can clean up all of the non-detail that I'm not giving you. But essentially, Building One, which is the building in the northwest corner, is four feet lower in finished floor elevation than Enos Mercado's buildings proposed. Also, we've removed all the loading docks and trash enclosures and drive-through off of the residence backyard, and that was something from day one we wanted to do because we felt like that was, those are the nuisances that you want to always not have in your backyard. So we felt like that was a major shift in the site layout that really was a benefit to the residents. Next slide, please. So between our previous Planning Commission hearing on July 15th and now, some of the interesting changes relative to Building One is that we were able to get the finished floor elevation two feet lower, but by pushing Buildings One and Two south 25 feet to make room for that multipurpose trail, it actually allowed us to cut the retaining wall, cut the corner on the retaining wall in that area that circled, to keep the retaining wall as small as possible as you come to the dead end of Inger Drive. And so now, when you reach Inger Drive, you'll have an embanked, sloped, landscaped area as opposed to a big wall. And also for the resident on the north, on the south side of Inger Drive, it provides a little bit of a lesser wall at the, I guess that'd be the northeast corner of the property. Next slide, please. So we went through quite a few renditions of retaining wall concepts to get to this point, and really, I'm hoping everyone's real pleased with this because this is a, this was a lot of elbow grease here to get to this point, but what we're trying to do is provide the neighbors with flexibility. If they want to keep their wall, they can keep their wall, and we will work with them to make sure that they have their wall. I would think the majority would not want to keep the wall and have a new structural design and built retaining wall that also looks nice, and that's what we're proposing to do here with the two-tier allen block wall system. Really tried to soften up the overall scale of the wall rather than going straight up and down with a linear 13-foot masonry wall. We're breaking up into three parts and creating a two-foot planter bed at the top of the first tier, and we have a fence at the top of the second tier, which is a concrete fence panel system that, you know, I think this section actually says at five feet, but it'd be a six-foot tall fence. And so we show that coming down south all the way until there's a point where topographically you do not need the retaining wall system anymore, and so as you get to Section C in the bottom right-hand corner, that's where we're showing just the existing wall for now because you don't need retaining as you get further south. So as we do the construction documents and we start to meet with each of the residents, we will know where this two-tier retaining wall system stops, and, you know, ultimately, again, the goal was to be as flexible as we could for the residents to have something that improves their backyard as it relates to the wall. Next slide, please. So just wanting again to show the difference between Enos Ranch Center West and Mercado's as it relates to the wall, because when we came in on July 15th, we were not trying to reinvent the wheels that relates to the wall. We were just doing what was previously approved, but what we have done is, what we're trying to show here is that we've significantly improved the design of the wall to soften it and provide some additional planning opportunities for the residents. The next slide, please. And Carol already provided these. And Carol already provided these photos, but just for the residents and the commission who just want to get a visual, there's all sorts of Allen block, actual types of block. But, so these pictures are representative of two different types of block, but really the concept is to show the two-tiered system and the planting in between. And then at the top of the wall would be this smooth-stone concrete panel fence, which is really a nice application for residential to commercial properties and provides a long-term, you know, concrete panel fence. It'll be there a long time. And, but it looks nice and plays well for, I think, both sides of the fence. Next slide, please. And so I just thought this would be a fun aerial to see. This was an aerial taken of the grand opening of the Enos Ranch Center. I don't think since, I don't think it's been that full since, especially during COVID. But, you know, with the site plan overlaid, it's just kind of helpful as a visual to see how, again, this is just trying to be an extension of Enos Ranch Center. And that is how we would operate it as well. And so I have looked at, just to switch gears, just trying to be brief here, Mr. Alvarez's letter. I appreciate his concerns. And I think Carol's staff's response to his letter was very good and succinct. So I don't want to take away from that. I will ask our civil engineer to respond to the concern over the retaining wall. In my opinion, we're actually going to resolve the problem of the current wall, which is not a structural wall. It's a freestanding wall. And so if there was a future landslide, it would break that wall. What we're going to do is put in a structural wall that will stand, withstand what we're going to build against it. I just, again, Carol did respond well to the other items. So I just wanted to drop down to our condition that we just asked staff to enter into the record, which is that the building one at the far, at the northwest corner, we're willing to condition that that wall on the western side of that building not be higher than 19 feet. And that, if you go to the next slide, if it's on there. It'd be at the end.
I'm not seeing it. I'm sorry.
That's okay. What we're trying to show is that there is a, we're willing to condition the wall to be 19 feet tall at its highest. When I looked at Enos Mercado's and the building elevation, the finished floor elevation and the building wall heights versus our finished floor elevation, which again is four feet lower than the Enos Mercado's and our 19-foot tall, we are actually, end up being seven feet lower than what the Enos Mercado's buildings were going to be built at. So I have, I understand Mr. Alvarez's concerns. I appreciate them. But I truly, in my, everything we have tried to do is to get this to a level of satisfaction for everybody that shows that we've done everything we can to mitigate the concerns and propose a design that has the least amount of impact on the residents at the same time providing something that is highly desirable by the community and beneficial to the property overall. So with, and just to clarify, this, when I'm talking about 19 feet, it's measured from the finished floor elevation of the building, not from the ground. Just want to make sure that's clear if I wasn't clear about that. So with that, I really appreciate your time and listening to me and would appreciate your approval tonight. And with that, I'd like to ask Russ Garrison to chime in a little bit if he's available.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders.
Commissioners, first, my apologies for missing the last commission meeting. I had food poisoning, so you didn't want to see me. So that was not a lot of fun. But I did get the word on some of the concerns, and I wanted to try to run down some of those. I know that Carol's talked about them some and Jim as well. But I just, from an engineering perspective, wanted to give you kind of our thought process on some of this. The main thing regarding the reduction of the wall heights was there's a lot of constraints. You know there's a bluff there. Betteravia's built, the existing ground at the cemetery is fixed. We're trying to make sure that our parking field doesn't exceed 2%. That was a real concern, not only for ADA but for carts that might get, you know, you don't want shopping carts running into cars and things like that. So basically, what we did was we traded off two feet of elevation difference that we had on the north end for that on the south end. So we, in talking with Jim, we thought, you know, we're trying to be careful because if you look at the Buffalo Wild Wings, the Habit Burger, those are below Betteravia Road. And that does create some challenges for drainage around those buildings. We had to put some retaining walls in and stuff like that. So we looked at doing the same type of thing on the south end of this project. We were able to give a little bit of a buffer there. One of the drive-throughs is there, and that makes a perfect place to put a retaining wall that makes sense. So that, and we were able to increase the slope as you descend down into the shopping center. Honestly, shopping centers don't like to be below the road. That's not desirable for visibility. But we were, and previously, we were in like somewhere in the range of about a 3% drop down in, which is nice and comfortable. We pushed that to about 5% for extended length. That does create some ADA challenges, but because the sidewalks were detached, we're confident we can make that work. So that's basically where we picked up that two feet. We picked up an additional six inches at the northwest corner of building one. We flattened that driveway out, the drainage of that as much as we could. And then it climbs back up to the main parking lot field. So we were able to, by flattening that out, we got another six inches of lowering that wall area. So that was, that's kind of how we achieved the additional drop in the wall height. We did look at different wall systems. We looked at conventional masonry. We looked at the large two-foot by four-foot stones. Reddy Rock is a local product that's available. But in this case, we thought that the Allen block, or, you know, that's a proprietary. There are other manufacturers as well, but that Allen block wall did soften it. It lays back at a 12-degree, so that softens it in addition to adding the planter and then breaking it up with that panel lock type wall at the top. So we were able to break that up, and we thought that that was the best solution for that. There's been a question about the integrity of the existing wall and our proposed Allen block wall. And I know I've got a couple of engineers on the line here. And you know that we've got, we've got to make sure that that Allen block wall is, the surcharges of both the building, if there's any building influence, as well as the truck traffic, we have to take that into account. In addition, the overall wall is over six feet tall, so we're going to be looking at seismic as well on that, just by code. There's a question about the existing wall and would what we are doing influence that. The Allen block wall design takes into account all that material that's behind it, and it ties that together, and it's a different structural design than conventional masonry. So it's all one unit. It sounds like they've had some issues with landslide-type activity pushing against their wall and that sort of thing. And it's my opinion that that, the wall that's existing was not designed for any retaining at all. And we are not proposing any against it. So we're, I think that there may have been farmer activity or erosion that put dirt against that wall and compromised that wall in the past. So we're very mindful of that. We're staying away from that. And as Jim said, if the landowner would like us to remove that existing wall, that, I think it works better for them. We're going to extend their side yard fences to our new wall. And I think it gives them a really nice feature. And again, that's their option if they want to do that or not. There was a question about the accuracy of the elevations on the plans. This was, this conceptual design was based off of aerial photography. I also, I walked the existing wall personally and took the existing contours that were done by the aerial and counted up the blocks and estimated those wall heights. So we're pretty doggone close, as close as an aerial topo can be of giving that information. I think there was also a question about whether we depicted the bluff adequately. And we're showing that at about 13 feet, which seems visually to be appropriate for what's out there. One of the questions was specifically to, I believe it's the second lot south of Inger Drive and whether that was shown in our section accurately. The aerial topo shows an elevation in that backyard. And that's what that was based off of and trying to estimate their finished floors based on that. So I think at worst, we're within six inches of what I'm showing on the plan. That's about all I can think of that was mentioned to me from the previous hearing that I was not in attendance at, but I'm open for questions if anybody has any.
Thank you, Russ. I appreciate that. Does the commission have any questions for either the applicant or the engineer that was just online? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and open it to the public. This is for the attendees. This is your moment to go ahead and make a comment regarding this project. I think Carol has mentioned that we received correspondence, I guess, late last night from Mr. Alvarez, representing a couple of the, or at least sharing a couple of different addresses, or at least concerns from a couple of different addresses that back up to the property on the west side. So I do see a hand up. It's Mr. Alvarez. Mr. Alvarez, you mentioned four different addresses with your letter. I'll go ahead and give you six minutes to go ahead and make a comment.
Great.
Please go ahead.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman and Planning Commission. I really appreciate that. I just want to read our letter into the record and make sure that, you know, these points are understood. Again, we, the contiguous neighbors at 666, 68, 674, and 680 Daniel Drive, understand the value of growth in the community while at the same time are vested in the conservation of our current quality of life and the value of our properties. The permanent loss of peace, quietude of the home and neighborhood, and overall degradation of the ambient conditions are all nuisances and hardships that affect the quality of life. We hold these homes and neighborhood values in high regard and see this project as infringing on them. Though concessions have been made by the developer, we consider this a good start and are encouraged to continue collaborating with the planning commission until we, the members of the impacted community, are satisfied. The following is a list of significant issues and concerns that are still active. Now, as you know, we've gone through that list and your staff has done a copious job of covering those. One of the things I do want to bring up, though, is just one of those bullet items was the, one of our concerns is two things. Number one is that the height of the wall is just represents, you know, just a drastic change in the overall appearance and feel of the property. You could say that homes with views are more likely to have more value and homes that are walled behind aren't as much. And so that's something that's coming to the detriment of us and our neighbors. And I think it's important to note that, that in that way, it does, it is harmful to the property's value. I won't go through the bullet items because you have those and they've been discussed here. But I will move on to my last paragraph. And I will, but if you do have a chance, please review the photos. It's something that I can't describe. But in the photos, you'll find what this means from an aesthetic perspective and what this looks like. We are definitely going to be impacted. Other concerns are, once this project is completed, you know, the amount of lights coming in from that parking lot, shining over fences and landing into our second-story dwellings is definitely going to be a factor. But I'd just like to say that in closing, I understand there are forces at play that would want to expedite this project more. In fact, we are open to the project, believe it or not. But not at the expense of a future riddled with extreme visual and audio impacts that would infringe on the basic tranquility and quality of life expected by any homeowner in a pre-existing residential area. We ask the planning commission and staff to continue to advocate on behalf of the impacted community that it represents in order to maintain a basic quality of life where dramatic visual blockages and ongoing noise and nuisances do not become the norm for our families' lives. Now, I'll tell you right now, we've, it's a, this is a view that's shared by these four contiguous neighbors, like I've mentioned. And we know that there's not just going to be impacts in the initial phase of this in terms of construction and all that nuisance, but that the ongoing aspect of it, you know, should be hopefully of less nuisance. And so that's why we made a stand. We're here today and we're acting on our behalf, just like the developer is acting on their behalf. And, but what we're, but our goal and what we're shooting for is quality of life. You know, we're not looking for a higher yield on an investment or we're not looking to maximize a dollar. We're just looking to maintain our quality of life. And I just wanted to set that for the record that we're not looking for anything additional. We just want the basics that any homeowner would have in any pre-existing neighborhood prior to any new construction around. And that would be the sentiment of me and my, the contiguous neighbors that are attached to me.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. Does the commission have any questions for Mr. Alvarez? I see none, Mr. Alvarez. I'll go ahead and move on to.
I got one.
The, I'm sorry, let me see. Commissioner Seifer.
Am I muted? Okay, hey, thank you. Yeah, I just had one question. That wall, what they've come up with with that Allen wall and the grading and the landscaping on there seems to me like that's a pretty good compromise. I was just wondering what he was thinking about on that.
Yeah, well, it, though, it doesn't, what it does is it does stagger the wall out, which is important. It's a great gesture on behalf of the developer. But it doesn't change the overall height of that wall, which would almost triple from its current height right now. So, you know, is it going to look nicer? Yeah, but are we still going to have, you know, a wall that's almost, at least, sorry, double, more than double the height of our current wall? That's a new reality that we're going to be living with. So does it add, you know, comfort to the wound? Yes. But is it, does it change the overall height of the wall? Not really. So I think we kind of end up in a similar position.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Seifer. Thank you, Mr. Alvarez.
Thank you.
Go ahead and go to the next attendee, Mr. Luton. You have three minutes.
Thank you, and I sure appreciate you giving me the opportunity. My name is Brad Luton and I live on Daniel as well. I live at 671 Daniel Drive. My position is I'm for the project and my reasons for it are as follows. Number one, I think it's a good thing for the community and I think it's a good thing for the neighborhood. Number one, it gives us increased walkability and bikeability through the neighborhood, access not only to the shop that's being proposed now, but also to the current businesses that are already existing around us. So now we have much improved walkability and bikeability. I think that's a good thing, not only for, you know, those that are on my street, but the ones that live in the neighborhood at large. So I think that's a big advantage. The businesses that come in, I like the plan. I think it offers a, you know, a continuation of the design elements already there, so it actually looks like a, you know, a well-thought-out design plan, and I like that. I think the mixture of businesses in there would be an enhancement to the community. It gives us a spot to. It gives us a spot to um, to go whether or not we want to shop there at the retail establishments that come in or the restaurants, but the outdoor patio. So anyhow, it gives us a spot as neighbors. And although we are we might be impacted more more so during the construction, I think we as neighbors have have we look to benefit the most from it too, because now I can just, you know, leave my house, walk over, um, if there, you know, if I want to, if there's a restaurant, if I want to go there with my family, we can easily walk there, have an evening, walk back, you know, enjoy the patios. Um, so as I say, I mean, we give a little bit, I know, at the beginning with the construction. I understand that a hundred percent. It's a nuisance. That that comes with any construction project. But I have to look at that also and weigh it on both sides is that although it might be a nuisance to me now, I look at for that nuisance, what my benefit would be. And I do see the benefit, I think, for not only myself as a neighbor, but I think as a community at large. I think this project will not only benefit us as neighbors, but I do see it as a benefit for uh, the community of Santa Maria that surrounds us as well. So I think globally, it's a it's a good thing for uh, the community. I have to look right now, too, as a as far as an improvement. What we have behind us now is is a vacant piece of property that, you know, is a collection spot for weeds, transients, um, garbage. It it really serves no benefit for us as as a neighborhood right now. You can't utilize it. You can't do anything on it. Even if they had went back and farmed it, that's no benefit to us as a neighbor. You can't go and purchase anything from them. I mean, it's 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 of no benefit for the community. If they come in and they put this in, there might be shops that I want to go to, maybe I don't want to go to. But at least now it gives me a piece of property and not only myself, but my but the neighborhood at large, it gives us something that we all benefit from or we all can use now. It's a it's I think it's a big improvement. I think it's an improvement for the neighborhood and the community. Um, so in that sense, as I say, I I I do think this is a good thing. Again, not only I think as neighbors we benefit the most, but I think it's a real benefit for the for not only the neighborhood, but the city of Santa Maria Park.
Thank you, Mr. Luton.
And I appreciate you giving me the time.
Thank you, Mr. Luton. Do we have anyone else wishing to make a public comment? Please use the raise hand feature or the star nine if you're dialing in. Yeah, I'm not seeing anyone wishing to make a comment. We'll we'll go ahead and go back to the applicant, Mr. Sanders, with any rebuttal. Mr. Sanders, please go ahead.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, okay. Um, yeah, I I uh, I again, I certainly appreciate Mr. Alvarez's um, concerns and and that of his his neighbors. Um, you know, when I when I look at the at the photographs in Mr. Alvarez's uh, uh, letter, um, the thing I find really interesting is that he's already got a a nice green screen of trees existing in his in the backyard. And what we are doing on the other side of that is planting another set of green trees. And so when our trees are are at the same maturity level as these, there will be a complete screen of the commercial neighborhood from their backyard. Uh, and to the concern over lights that might um, come over, that that is that that will that is a condition of our project that we would provide a photometric plan as a part of our our permits that the city would not give us a permit without seeing that and showing that there would be no um, foot candles or or light emanating outside of our property lines. So there's actually going to be screens on the parking lot lights. There'll be screens on any of the any lights that would be on the on the wall. Um, and and I I we, one of the things that I failed to mention, but we we did do is the actual um, drive that runs along the western side of Building One, we actually lowered that as well as much as we could. So so that actually sat lower. Um, and I think, Russ, you might be able to comment on that. I think we got that down another foot or two. And so um, when the actual cars or trucks would drive past there, they're they're going to sit lower than uh, we had previously proposed as well. You know, we we've, at the end of the day, we manage about fifteen property shopping centers, um, with quite a few that um, run right up against existing single-family homes. And so we know what it means to be a neighbor as a commercial property manager uh, next to a set of single-family homes. And the last thing I want is my property manager getting constant phone calls um, about complaints. So just I I, Mr. Alvarez and and the other neighbors, I would like you to know that that is something that it matters to us. It matters to us to be good neighbors. Um, I I look forward to meeting you and going through what we're going to do on the retaining wall and making sure that it is uh, something that works for for you or and and each one of the neighbors, I look forward to meeting. Um, and and at the end of the day, when we're in op this center's in actual operation, um, rest assured, we do not want a bunch of phone calls. So we will look to operate this in a first-class manner, as we've been doing across the street with the Enos Ranch Center. And um, uh, yeah, I'll I'll give it back to you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this item and bring it back to the commission for any discussion, um, comments, questions, motions. Any anyone, any commissioner willing to? Commissioner Seifert, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair Lopez. Um, yeah, I'm really pleased with the discussion tonight with the neighbors and and also with the developer, Mr. Sanders. I think he's done a really good job of listening to the concerns. And although we can't alleviate all of the concerns of the neighbors, I think that the commission and I think the developer have done uh, quite a bit uh, to get this project lower, uh, which is which is a big concern. Uh, there's limits as to how far we can lower it. Um, I think Commissioner Blanco, two feet. I think we've 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 at least got that. Uh, we've got four feet on one of the buildings, so that is good. Um, I I understand that they don't want to be looking at this this huge monster, but uh, unfortunately, we've we've got this piece of property that's going to develop. And I think that I think between the the comments from the homeowners and with Russ, uh, working on lowering those grades, and then with this Allen Wall block, um, personally, um, I think that's going to be much more attractive than a straight block wall. Um, and I hope that that it does work into some sort of a um, uh, work through with the homeowners and that they get behind it. Maybe they could actually get something they like out of it, maybe some gardening. Maybe they could get some plants and and grow some of your own vegetables uh, on that terraced area. Um, so I I there there could be some good that becomes of that. Um, as far as flipping buildings around, that's really not up to us as far as one of the concerns was if we could switch. I don't have the letter in front of me, one of the buildings, the other. But because of the way that these the the ADA, the Accessibility Acts, we we, there's no way the civil engineer can just flip a building and have the grades work. So they've worked really hard in a number of times to get the grades to work for the buildings to be located where they are, the sizes that they are. And so I I can't see that as something that 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 would be acceptable. I'm I'm sure that that that's not something they can do. But they have worked really hard to get that corner down and um, uh, get that trail so that it's usable. Uh, I did have, just ex parte, Chair, I did have a small conversation with one of the uh, chairman of the uh, Bob Engel of the Cemetery District. It was just an in-passing type of uh, small little conversation about this property. Um, what else did we have? I think the hours of construction are good. Uh, thank you for adding that the noise noiseless work can continue during the weekend. It's very important to get the job done. Uh, and it does it does actually work. Uh, there's going to be plenty of people that can work without making noise to the uh, surrounding neighborhoods. And I know that Commissioner Dickerson would be happy to see that we that those plazas have been added, that he was asking for, and the areas for people to congregate on the outside. I think you've done a nice job of uh, incorporating those. So all in all, I think that uh, I think that it's a good project and I think that the developer has done some nice uh, nice jobs as far as some of these items to make them where that they'll be more acceptable to the surrounding area. Um, uh, I'm I'm pleased with what occurred tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Seifert. Yes, I did fail to ask if any other commissioners had any ex parte communication uh, on this project. I don't see any. Uh, Commissioner Blanco, please go ahead.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, basically just want to echo what Commissioner Seifert, uh, the points that he made. I think, um, you know, just overall, I think, um, the applicant and staff did a very good job of coming together and working through some of the comments and issues that were brought up at the last meeting and through some of the, uh, you know, comments from the public as well. Um, you know, it's it's never perfect, but I think it's a it's a very, very reasonable compromise. And so I appreciate the effort that's gone into um, addressing all of the concerns. Um, I I am pleased to see that the site was lowered. Uh, it's very difficult to lower it and I think, um, you know, putting some thought into it, I think they sounds like they did the best they could and I think that that's a good uh, that was a good thing. I do like the plazas. Uh, that was one thing that, um, you know, Commissioner Dickerson brought up and I think others and, uh, you know, having that, I think, is going to only make the development a little bit nicer. So I think that that's really good. I'm I'm glad the uh, lighting uh, was addressed because that's one question I did have. Um, but as standard practice for most developments go, I think it'll be addressed appropriately. Um, I do like the trail location and the fact that it'll that it will be meandering. I think that that is a much nicer layout. Um, and I think uh, public comment from Mr. Luton, is it Luton? Um, regarding just, uh, you know, the ability for that neighborhood to have access to uh, or easy access to that development as well makes a lot of sense. So um, all in all, I got to say that, um, you know, the process has unfolded pretty well, I think, with the comments that we had and and even though you got to have several meetings, I think um, it's only been to the benefit of the project. And so I I think um, I think in in my opinion, um, you know, um, the the comments have been addressed as best as possible and I think we're coming up with a better product than we started with.
All right, Dave.
Thank you, Commissioner Blanco. Any other comment, Commissioner Hernandez?
I agree with the other commissioners. I think this, um, they listened and they improved the project. I think it'll be um, a nice addition. It is better than having unimproved land, vacant land. And so I think it's a good thing and I would, you know, move like to make a motion if we don't have any more comments.
Yeah, I'll just do a real quick comment. Um, this this plan was brought out of the Williamson Act, gosh, I'm I'm sorry, this parcel was brought out of the Williamson Act fifteen years ago? Ryan, is that is that roughly correct?
Yeah, I was just actually looking that up. It, uh, the Enos Ranch was an annexation that occurred in the early nineties. And so it was started, it was anticipated to be built out into a commercial project uh, following that Lafco process that the city went through and finished up in the early two thousands.
Yeah, and and then it was it was it had the pre-zoning. It was, uh, it it went to, um, uh, once it actually became the first um, uh, planned development permit, which was a Mercado project, that was in twenty twelve. So that was eight years ago. Uh, and eight years ago, I don't believe that the site design was superior to this. I think that the developer did go above and beyond and I I completely understand Mr. Alvarez's position. Uh, it it's it's tough. I I think they've they've done what they've can to try to soften um, the the view to the east. Uh, at some point, there there, when you live next to a vacant piece of property, I you have to think that there's going to be development. Um, I I I applaud Mr. Alvarez for for really giving an excellent presentation today and and accompanying it with sketches and pictures. Uh, I I I think Mr. Sanders, I I think also worked in in trying to appease the the neighbors. And I I think, like Mr. or Commissioner Blanco said, we have a better project. Um, I I I I also thought about the lighting. Uh, Ryan, is that when when we're talking about the the study that's done for lighting, is that incorporate dark sky requirements?
It's a photometric plan that looks at, um, the plan shows where the lighting fixtures are, what types of shields are going to be around the fixtures and how that light is going to project onto the ground. And so dark sky usually means um, putting implements in to limit the amount of light, excess light pollution leaving the property. So this is required to have all the full cutoff shields to keep that light on the property.
Okay, perfect. Uh, thank you, Ryan. So with that said, I I I just wanted to make a comment on the lighting. Uh, I'm I'm not sure if I'm clear on on condition number eighteen with building number one at night. What was it? I don't know if Carol maybe can clarify that a little bit. On on condition eighteen, there was there was a requirement or I'm sorry, there was a, I think staff wanted to see that parapet height, not greater than nineteen feet or the building height to the top of 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 roof?
So so, uh, staff was proposing a revised condition to just add um, at the applicant's um, offering, uh, to uh, limit the height of the west wall of Building One to nineteen feet. So it would be a maximum of nineteen feet um, tall. And it would, I think it would end at the parapet.
Got it, got it. Okay, thank you, Carol. Any other questions or comments for staff or Commissioner Hernandez, if you're ready to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm ready. I'm ready.
Please, please go ahead.
I move that we approve the Enos Ranch West Shopping Center planned development permit at the northwest corner of Beteravia Road and College Drive, PD twenty twenty dash zero 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 four.
Do we have a second?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, can I just clarify? Commissioner Hernandez, does that include with the revision to condition number eighteen?
Yes, with the revision to condition number eighteen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Uh, Commissioner Seifert?
I I would second that with the revision.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hernandez and seconded by Commissioner Seifert. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Chair Lopez?
Aye. Uh, the motion passed, the motion passes. Congratulations. Good luck on your project. Uh, thank you, Mr. Sanders. Wait a little bit to move on to the next item of our agenda.
Thank you, Chair. We're just going to switch spaces here and get Dana's gonna get up to the other computer here and get her presentation loaded.
I grabbed a log.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let me go ahead and, um, this is item number two of tonight's agenda. It's the zoning text amendment for accessory dwelling units. Your title twelve of the city's area municipal code. May we please have a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Chair Lopez. My name is Dana Eadie and I'm going to be giving the staff presentation um, this evening for the proposed ordinance amendments to the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. So, um, the ordinance is proposed to be amended um, to conform with the new state law that became effective uh, in January on January first of this year. And the amendments include um, allowing junior accessory dwelling units, um, as well as uh, accessory dwelling units on lots that contain multifamily residential developments, um, the removal of some owner occupancy requirements and rental limitations, um, some changes in the park. um, some changes in the parking regulations and, uh, development standards a- as well as impact fees. So I'm going to go through, um, the amendments, um, in this presentation and just basically walk everyone through those. So now, under the new state law, um, it requires the allowance of one junior accessory dwelling unit or JADU, um, per single family, family residentially zoned lot that has an existing residence. And those would be, um, on lots that are zoned R1. Um, JADUs, um, cannot be any larger than 500 square feet and they have to be located entirely within the living space of the primary residence. Um, so they cannot be located within a garage. It has to be within the actual living space of the residence. A kitchenette is required in a junior ADU, um, but they don't have to provide a bathroom. It can actually share a bathroom, um, with the main residence. And a separate exterior entrance is required, um, but no parking is actually required for junior ADUs. And so, um, we've provided an example here just showing, um, a junior ADU within the walls of the living space of a primary residence. So ADUs are also now, um, allowed on lots that are, um, that are zoned for multifamily dwellings. So at least one ADU, um, has to be allowed, but the total number of ADUs, um, cannot exceed 25% of the existing dwelling units on the lot. So, um, for this example, there are, um, this is a lot that, that has 12 dwelling units on it. So 25% of that would be three units. Um, two of the units can be detached, but those units do have some limitations to the height. So they can't be any higher than 16 feet and they have to comply with a four-foot rear and side yard setback. And then I also wanted to mention that any ADU that's located, um, within the, um, existing living area of these units, um, it, it cannot be located in any areas that are used for a livable space. So that includes like storage rooms or passageways, garages and basements. You can locate the ADU in areas that have the, those types of, they're used for those types of uses. It just can't be within the living space. So there have been some changes to owner occupancy and, and rental, um, time limits. So, um, as of January 1st, the state law no longer requires an owner occupancy deed restriction for accessory dwelling units. Um, the deed restriction is required for junior accessory dwelling units. And so it requires the property owner to occupy either the junior ADU or the primary residence as their main residence. Um, junior ADUs and ADUs can be rented, but they may not be rented for any less than 30 So, um, there have been some changes as well to parking requirements. Um, so currently, um, for, uh, ADUs, the ordinance requires one parking space per ADU. Um, that requirement has stayed the same, but one of the main changes now is that, um, currently if you convert like a garage or a covered parking structure to an ADU, you are required to replace that parking on, uh, on the site. And now, under the current regulations, you do not have to replace that parking. Um, ADU parking is also not required, um, if it's, if the ADU is within one half-mile walking distance of public transit and that includes bus stops. Um, it, if it's part of the proposed or existing primary residence or accessory structure, you don't have to provide parking. Um, if on-street parking permits are required but not offered to the ADU occupant, um, no parking's required in that instance either. Or, um, when there's a car-share vehicle within one block of the ADU. So, um, change, there have been some changes to the development standards for both, um, accessory dwelling units as well as, uh, for attached ADUs and for detached ADUs. So for detached ADUs, um, they can be either new construction or a converted accessory structure. Um, the maximum size of a detached ADU, um, is 1,200 square feet. And if the lot also contains a junior ADU, the detached ADU can only be 800 square feet. So the size goes down if it has a junior ADU as well. Um, the setbacks for new construction is four feet for the rear and side yard. Um, currently, the regulation is a five-foot setback, so it's been reduced to four feet now. Um, the height of a new detached ADU, um, is what's permitted in the zone, so that's typically 30 feet. But again, if the lot also contains a junior ADU, then there's a limitation on the height, so it goes down to 16 feet. So for attached ADUs, um, those can include, um, a new cons, an addition to a home, so that would be new construction, um, or the conversion of existing living space within the home. Or you can also convert, um, a garage to an ADU. Um, that's also considered an attached ADU. So the size of an attached ADU is limited to 50% of the primary residence or 850 square feet, whichever is greater. Um, the setbacks are four feet again, um, it, the same as with a detached ADU. Um, an attached ADU can occupy any level of the primary dwelling unit and the height is also limited to the zone district standard, which is, again, typically 30 feet in residential zones. So, um, we have provided a couple of examples here just showing, um, a new construction ADU as well as the conversion of a garage into an ADU. Um, those have been, um, probably the, um, the typical, um, types of attached ADUs that we've been reviewing at the city. So we just wanted to provide an example of that. So as I mentioned before, you can have a junior ADU, um, on the same lot as a detached ADU. So I wanted to mention this, the staff report that we provided does state that you can also have an attached ADU as well, but that's actually not correct. So, um, the only time you can have, um, another ADU on the property with a junior ADU is if it's detached. So the, um, again, for a junior ADU, the maximum floor area that's allowed is 500 square feet and it's within the living space of the, um, primary residence. And then, um, the detached ADU is, um, limited to 800 square feet in size and 16 feet in height with the, uh, same four-foot rear and side yard setbacks. So with this configuration, you could have a total of three, uh, dwelling units on the, on the property. The main residence, junior ADU and a detached ADU. So the second example I, I wanted to go over is just a, um, instance where you could have an attached ADU as well as a detached ADU. And, um, the development standards are the same as, um, what I presented in the presentation earlier where if you're going to do a detached by itself or an attached by itself, the really, the development standards are the same, um, as far as the maximum size and height and setbacks. Um, and again, it's, it is a example of where you could have, um, three dwelling units on the, on a property. And then one thing I did want to mention on the, the previous slide, so on this one where you have the junior ADU, in this instance, this would only be in the R1 zone because that's the only zone where you can do a junior ADU. So just a couple of other changes I wanted to mention. Um, AD, uh, applications for ADUs, uh, currently the regulate, well, the previous regulations, it was 120 days. Now with the new changes, they need to be permitted ministerially, which is, uh, over the counter, um, within 60 days of filing a, a complete application with the city. Also, now there is no minimum lot size required, um, to build an ADU. And ADUs that are less than 750 square feet in size are now exempt from impact fees. And it's per ADU, it's not cumulative. So if you have a situation where you have more than one, um, ADU on the site, you look at each ADU separately. So the next steps with the ordinance amendment, um, the planning commission's recommendation by resolution will be, um, presented to the city council for adoption. And then if the ordinance amendments are adopted, um, within 60 days, the city will send the amended ordinance to state, the State Department of Housing and Community Development for approval. And so staff recommends that the planning commission by resolution recommend that the city council approve the zoning text amendment, Z 2021. Thank you, that concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you. Thank you for that, uh, report, that presentation. Uh, does the commission have any questions for staff? Uh, Commissioner Seifert?
Well, we can't change anything. I mean, this is, I'm not sure, uh, w- we're going to recommend that this goes to the city. What could we possibly change on this? This is state law, correct?
Yes, Commissioner Seifert, this, um, these changes are based on state law. Um, they're basically meeting, meeting the minimum state law requirements. Um, so for the number of ADUs that are permitted and size and height and the, the development standards follow the state law.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, I don't particularly agree with this stuff that's going on to our R1, uh, housing, uh, but, uh, my opinion is just that, an opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Seifert. Any other comments from commissioners, questions? Uh, Dana, I had a question, um, with respect to the 16-foot height requirement, or I'm sorry, uh, maximum height. Is that to the ridge or is that to the top of the second-story wall?
To the ridge, mhm. Yeah, uh, Chair Lopez, that would be to the top of the ridge line, so it's the highest point of the building.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's a one-story building, typically.
Okay, thank you. And then the second question I had was with, with respect to the owner occupancy requirement of the junior ADU. Uh, working through the county of Santa Barbara, I, I came across some literature that, that did allow some exceptions to that and I just wanted to know if that's something that the, the, the county was able to, to, uh, keep as an exception. Uh, the exceptions were unless owned by a governmental agency, land trust or housing organization. It, it would be allowed, um, uh, it wouldn't require the owner occupancy.
Thanks, Chair Lopez. We, um, I do know what you're talking about. We do not have that included in our ordinance. Um, if you wanted us to look into including it, I would just need to pull out some additional information to do that. It, I had it actually in front of me and I could find it if, um, I don't know if there's any other questions, but we could look for it and let you know exactly what it entails.
Yeah, I, I just, I just wanted to, to just know if, if, if other municipalities or governing agencies had the ability to make, uh, an exception to that, to that, um, requirement for the junior ADUs. Uh, and if the, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with the way it is. I just was, was asking if, if it was something that the governing agency can add or, or take away from, from that requirement. I have a government code section if you, if you want one.
We've got it here, we're just taking a look at it really quickly.
Okay, thank you.
I think that our advice based on testimony from the prior ordinance and through the few years we've been implementing it is to try, the city's direction is to be as strict as possible, um, it, with regulating these. Uh, before we required all of them to have the owner occupancy, that was something the city council really wanted and so now the state said, oh, we can't require that anymore. So they're really, um, removing a lot of the layers that we once had in place. So we were just trying to keep it as close to the state minimum as possible. Some jurisdictions are allowing more. So I think, you know, to the, the point of Commissioner Seifert, you know, well, how, what are we, what can we do here with this? Well, some jurisdictions are actually writing ordinances that allow more of them. So we didn't recommend that for just knowing the direction, um, of policy in the city and overcrowding. We just weren't going that way with our draft language.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ryan.
I, I did find, um, the section, um, or we did, we found the section that you're, you're speaking of. So it says, um, says require owner occupancy in the single-family residence in which the junior accessory dwelling unit will be permitted. It says the owner may reside in either the remaining portion of the structure or the newly created junior accessory dwelling unit. And then it goes on to say owner occupancy shall not be required if the owner is another governmental agency, land trust or housing organization. So the last sentence, we do not have that in our amendment.
I, I'm okay with leaving that out there. I don't know if any of the other commissioners are. Commissioner Blanco?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, on the garage conversion and the parking replacement, so if there's a two-car garage that gets converted, how does the, um, parking replacement work for that? Do you have to provide two onsite stalls or how does that work?
There is no more, they're not required to replace it. So they will not be replacing it. We cannot require that.
Onsite or, or offsite?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, then, then I guess the only concern there is just how crowded some streets are already with parking and, uh, you know, I, I've seen just how bad the parking situation is in some residences is just, I guess unfortunate that, uh, it won't get any better, it only worsens. But I guess there's not much we could do, like Commissioner Seifert kind of said.
Commissioner Seifert?
Yeah, that, the other thing too is that, uh, you know, just from a builder's aspect is our sewer lines, our water lines, our infrastructure is all based on R1, one occupancy, one, one building, uh, with a single family, not three multiple families using the same sewer line. I mean, we're, we're, we're definitely, uh, our city will be definitely impacted by our utilities. Uh, uh, it'll be very interesting to see how it all works and if our systems that are in place are able to take on all this new, uh, use. Uh, that's, that's what I'm very interested to see. Uh, it's, uh, where we could impact, uh, one, one single residence, if I have it right now, could have three families in there, whereas before it could only have one. So all the waste, all the water, all the electricity, all the, everything is going to be impacting our city. Uh, I just, I, I'm concerned about it, but, uh, it's our state law and, and I talked to David Bies about it and he thinks that we can, we can certainly make arrangements and handle it. It just, uh, uh, I, I can see some, uh, some things on the road ahead that might not be too pleasant, but, uh, I know, as far as the ordinance and what you're, what we're doing, what we're recommending, I'm fine with that.
Thank you, Commissioner Seifert. Any other comments or questions from commission to staff? Uh, I guess the city's the applicant. I don't know if, um, our initial presentation counts for, for both. Dana, I don't know if you'd like to respond to anything or?
No, I don't have any other comments, just here to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Dana. Go ahead and open it to the public. Um, if there's anyone online attending or dialing in that would like to make a comment, please do so now. in that would like to make a comment, please do so now. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public portion of this meeting and come, uh, bring it back to the commission for, uh, discussion or any motion.
It's a resolution?
It's a res-
Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. So I move that we vote on resolution number, what number is it?
Yeah, it's, it's not listed on, is it?
Oh, it's not listed on the agenda?
It's like twenty-seven, eighty-eight. But, we, I guess I was corrected last time, we don't need it, so, we'll, we'll go ahead and, uh, uh, Commissioner Hernandez has made the motion, do we have a second?
Aye, I'll second it.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hernandez, seconded by Commissioner Seifert. May we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Chair Lopez?
Aye. Uh, the resolution passes, um, thank you. We'll go ahead and go to the next item. Thank you, Dana.
Thank you.
Move on to other business, um, any oral reports from planning commission or staff? Ryan?
Chair, commissioners, uh, just a look ahead for you, we, um, and for those listening, we do not have a study session scheduled tomorrow. Our next meeting of the commission will be a study session of August sixth, so we won't be convening until then. So, um, oh wait, I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong thing. That's, that's past tense. Um, okay, so let me go to the right date here, I'm so sorry. So September third is our next time we're convening for study session. So we do have, um, a cell site project that we're gonna be discussing during that study session, again, that's September third. We do not have a study session tomorrow, we do not have items for September second hearing, so, um, yeah, your, your next, uh, meeting will be the study session of September third. And then looking ahead, um, the agendas are a little bit lighter. Um, we've gotten through a lot of big items with you all in the past few months, um, and we're seeing new applications slowing down. So some big things that we are working on is we're revising our telecom ordinance, so that's something that's gonna be before you, um, this winter. And we're also scheduling a study session with you all for the general plan update. So our consultant team, um, and staff would like to meet with you all to go through what we have done to date, the public outreach that we've done, the results of that outreach, and talk next steps, so we'd like to just do that with the commission, and we're looking to schedule that on October eighth, study session. We also have, um, tentatively September seventeenth, study session, uh, the Centennial Gardens Multifamily Project, that's on Battles, um, near Blosser, actually it's along the railroad tracks in Battles, right across the street from Equeste Apache. There's a vacant piece there that's next to a single-family residential, it's actually multifamily, and, um, it's coming back around, um, with an apartment project, so we're gonna bring that before you in a study session, September seventeenth. Those are some of the items that we have ahead, so, sorry about the confusion.
Thank you, Ryan. Just one real quick item, uh, with respect to housing, I was, I, I, I listened in, uh, to, to a talk show that talked about, there's new legislation to allow the subdivision of single-family residential lots, that's being proposed from the same gentleman that did A D U's. So I, I, I can't recall the, the, the bill, but that, it, it just passed its first committee for the assembly, I think, so, um, that might be something we, we can keep on our radar, because that, it will end single-family residential zoning.
We'll take a look at that for you.
Yeah, uh, anything else for staff or comments? Okay. We're adjourned at eight oh six, thank you, everybody.
Bye, everyone.
Thank you. Take care.
You, goodnight.